Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker, absent. Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Madam Clerk, would you let the record move that Mr. McCosker is out of town?
Sure.
Please, thank you. All right. Would you please stand for the color guard presentation by the Mountain View JROTC and the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'd like to thank Mountain View High School's Marine Corps JROTC for being with us this evening. Our color guard cadets were Captain Schrader, Cadet Major Yakon, Cadet Staff Sergeant Scott, and Cadet Private Fosh. And we also want to congratulate the Mountain View Marine Corps JROTC for their showing in the recent competitions with their young staffing. They're doing an amazing job and we thank them. And of course, their instructors, as all our instructors across the high schools in our JROTCs. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second?
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards and recognitions.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm going to read a proclamation to recognize the school board, because this is School Board Appreciation Month. Whereas the education of Virginia's school age children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our Commonwealth is built, and whereas locally elected school boards play an important and vital role in the representative democracy, and decisions made by local boards of education directly influence instruction in Virginia public schools, and whereas these decisions affect the present and future lives of children, and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in local, state, national, and global 21st century knowledge economy, and whereas local school board members work tirelessly with parents, businesses, education professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And where this year's theme, Leading for Success, reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders, and whereas School Board Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to build stronger relationships between the thousands of Virginians who champion the mission of public education and school board members, now therefore be proclaimed that Stafford County Public School recognizes the contribution of the school board to academic success of our students, and expresses a sincere recognition to board members for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout the county, and be also proclaim that me declares February 2019 as School Board Month Appreciation Month, and encourages school and community leaders to appropriately recognize the county's dedicated school board members signed 12th Day of February in my sentra. I have to tell you, I've worked 20 years as superintendent of a lot of boards. Hands down, you are the hardest working, longest hour school board I've ever seen. So I'm just going to tell you as one member of this community.
It is my time.
I thank you, and you guys, they said work tirelessly? You guys are tiring me out, and I never thought I would get tired. So on behalf of everybody in this room and watching, I thank you. We thank you. Now, I think, I think we have gifts, right? Oh, there, yeah, so you have gifts. Enjoy your gifts. Okay, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Kizner. We just want to survive. We're in the midst of a multi-task season here, so we'll keep on moving forward. That brings us to the public budget hearing. Dr. Chase?
Sure. The school board is in the process of preparing its funding request for fiscal year 2020, FY20. The funding request will be presented to the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on March 19th. Any citizens who wish to provide input and recommendations on this issue, the budget, are invited to come forward to speak during the February 12, 2019, school board meeting. That's right now. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1113, Public Complaints. So we're first having the public comment on budget, and then we will open it again for public comment on other topics. But right now, it's just budget.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. We have six people who signed up for the public hearing on the budget, and I'm going to call three names at a time, and when those six people have finished, if anyone else wishes to address the board, you're welcome to come forward. The first speaker is Julie Perham, the second is Elena Beard, and the third is Christian P. Buddy.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Kizner. My name is Julie Perham. I live at 415 Decatur Road in the Griffiths-Widewater District, and I teach at the Hampton Oaks Elementary School, where we believe in strong hearts, strong minds, and strong effort. I'm also a proud member of the Stafford Education Association. I'm finishing my 37th year of public school teaching this year, 22 in Arizona and 15 in Stafford. You may remember me speaking on behalf of the forgotten senior employees in our division, and while I still believe that much more can and needs to be done for our longtime and long ignored veterans, tonight I speak in support of all your employees, the Red for Ed movement, and SEA's 5% for All campaign. When I wear red on Tuesdays, it's not because I get to wear jeans, although I do thank Dr. Kizner for that incentive, and it's not just because I love the color red, although I do, and it's not even that both my high school and my college teams wear red. I wear red to let anyone know who notices that adequate support for our public schools is long past due. I wear red for my colleagues in Stafford, who aren't as fortunate as I am to have a spouse that outearns me. If I didn't, even after 37 years in public school teaching, I'd never be able to afford to live in the community in which I teach. I wear it for the teachers in our county who qualify for free and reduced lunch for their children, and who work multiple jobs, not to afford boats, vacations, and luxury items, but to pay their student loans, buy food, and pay for heat. I wear red for my fellow school employees in Virginia, whose classrooms are crumbling, whose textbooks are outdated, and whose students are underserved. And I wear red for my students and other students in Virginia who deserve better. Our students deserve licensed teachers in their classrooms, not long-term subs. They deserve bus drivers and paraprofessionals who can afford to stay in Stafford and not leave for higher pay elsewhere. They deserve teachers who can focus on the myriad of additional duties they have instead of working a second job to make ends meet or worrying whether they can afford to turn on their heat. 5% for All won't solve all of our problems. Honestly, it's not enough. What 5% for All will do, however, is show your commitment to all your employees, top to bottom. It shows that you're hearing us when we say we've had enough and need your support. Every year, we get messages from you that talk about how much you value your employees, and every year, we hear that we matter. It's time for you to stop talking about it and show us, through your actions, that you're hearing us. Show us by supporting Red for Ed. Show us by amending the superintendent's budget to include 5% for all employees. If you don't, I'm afraid that the number of your excellent employees who show you that they've had enough is going to skyrocket. Show them that we don't want them to go. Thank you.
Is Elena Beard here?
Good evening, board members and Dr.
Oh, excuse me, I was just asking if the speakers could pull the mic down and speak into it so we can hear better.
Hello. Good evening, board members and Dr. Kizner. My name is Elena Beard, and I live at 4 Sleepy Cove, Fredericksburg. Since the fiscal year 2008, base salaries for teachers with 12-plus years' experience have decreased, with the median decrease being 3.8%. At the same time, less experienced teachers have gained a straight average of an 11.7% increase in salaries. Stafford County has, in effect, devalued experience in its educational system, choosing instead to take the less costly but also more inefficient and arguably less effective route to staffing the teachers of its children. The backbone of any educational system, indeed, any business or government entity, is its core group of motivated, experienced staff who provide program and effective insight year after year. Wise leadership understands that valuable asset takes steps to maintain what drives its passion, effectiveness, and belief in the service they provide. Wise leadership does not take advantage of this belief in mission, that the backbone implementing its programs will continue to perform optimally regardless of how poorly they are compensated or recognized, and/or recognized. The more experienced teachers give to their students and the school system in many ways other than the insight that comes from their having been there, done that. Being more mature, most have moved beyond the daily requirements of raising and caring for their own young families, and are better to able to provide more time to focus on the classroom, on individual students, and on curriculum development. Many take on additional responsibilities around their schools, things such as offering unpaid tutoring before and/or after school, weekend tutoring at the library to help out busy parents and struggling students, structured STEM programs such as C-Perts to grow the young mind. These are examples of ongoing activities that are, that the more experienced teachers give freely of themselves in order to help their students achieve and advance, largely given out of the heart of the more experienced teachers who can afford the time. The proposed Stafford County Public School budget continues to devalue, in some way may say disrespect, experience in the county schools. At what point does the backbone of its educational system say enough is enough? At what point do these classroom leaders recognize that these statistical machinations with their pay scales is ruining loyalty of their school, their mission, and their ability to maintain a living wage into their retirement?
Ms. Beard, could you wrap it up? And you're welcome to submit your comments for the record if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. P. Buddy, Al Watkins, Paul Wodowsky, and Colleen Wieners.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy School Board Appreciation Month. Thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you, Missy, for everything you do for us as well. We wouldn't be anywhere without people like Missy in our lives. So, my name is Christian Peabody. I live at 121 Forest Avenue in Fredericksburg. I'm the Falmouth Elementary Music Teacher and the president of the Stafford Education Association. And tonight, I quickly wanted to address the progress of our mutual partnerships and the continued perspective for the proactive progress we're going to have rolling forward as the budget discussions continue. So really quick as a review, Lobby Day was a very significant success as a formative event for the first one in Virginia. We were able to work with Dr. Kizner, Brenda O'Brien, every building administrator, and other divisional leaders to secure professional leave for those advocates who went, and transportation as well. And they all came back with a sense of empowerment and unified voice to advocate for Stafford County Public Schools, and that's starting to gain momentum throughout buildings also. Julie already mentioned Red for Ed Tuesdays, which Matthew Lentz, who is our Red for Ed Chair, he's a former educator, Arizona as well, worked with Dr. Kizner to solidify that so that way all educators can practice wearing red, and some of you guys are wearing red tonight too, which is awesome, across the division, open support of proactive engagement in the development, so they have a stake in it as well, and they can provide their expertise and their insight. And it's cool because we're getting buildings that are entering, like, tacit escalations on who's wearing the most red, so that's exciting too. But again, and we're seeing community members, we're seeing students starting to do this as well, and again, all in support of advocating for this division. And on February 5th, we had a special membership vote to select delegates to go to convention, which Dr. Kizner is working with us to secure professional leave also, but most importantly, for Dr. Kizner's budget recommendations, and membership overwhelmingly supported his recommendations. As one of the most forward-looking and inclusive they've seen in years, they have really a lot of hope going forward. And they also voted in spirit of our No Fans or Butts campaigns that we need to prioritize and solidify and secure 5% for everyone across this division. So we're finding ourselves in a really remarkable time and place, I think, to make even further actions happen based in these partnerships. We're seeing more and more educators step out and really trying to rally and advocate for the division like they've never have before, and to help resurrect this division as, like Dr. Kizner said during his budget recommendations, to get us back at that state and national standard of excellence. And we're right there. The future is really tangible. It's really exciting. I continue to find myself immensely blessed as well to serve such a professional corps of educators and divisional leaders moving forward. So as we continue through the budget, and we develop and continue to work with these relationships, it's going to be exciting to see how we're going to be able to enhance and to refine actions that reflect the reality of the budgets that are being developed around us concurrently as well. We'll be able to acknowledge the sobering severity of the forecastable needs our division's going to need to stay competitive, and I'll finish up with this.
Thank you, Mr. P.
And also, the enormous potential for what the future's about to hold for us. So if there's anything we can do for you, please reach out to us, let us know. And again, happy School Board Appreciation. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Kizner, and everyone in attendance here in person and viewing at home. I'm Al Watkins, Achoia resident, Colonial Forge teacher, and here tonight as a representative of the Stafford Education Association. As I have already emailed you this evening, the way-too-longty speech that I intended to give here tonight, please accept this somewhat brief summary of its very detailed contents. The SEA has concerns that the proposed implementation of the 5% increase in pay will not have the desired effect or impact for which our campaign is intended. Our concern is that the proposed implementation does not in any way differentiate SCPS from other local divisions who also propose similar increases. Thus, we fear that the exodus of teachers will continue if the status quo is simply maintained. Further, when discussion of potentially considering the pay scale being reduced and condensed over time to 30 years has begun, extending the pay scale to 39-plus years seems counterproductive. The proposed implementation greatly benefits teachers with less experience, providing them once again with a greater percentage of a COLA-type increase beyond the percentage gained by just advancing to the next level. The proposed implementation is detailed within table number one that I provided to you. The teachers with experience levels above 12 or 13 years are the loyal teachers who have not similarly benefited in the past and once again would not comparably be rewarded for their continued service. However, as noted in table number two that I provided, there is a way to differentiate Stafford County Public Schools from our competitive neighbors. If the method of implementation was to provide the 5% directly to the scale and then advance each teacher to the next level, that would make Stafford different. That would provide loyal and experienced teachers with the pay increases, their years of service warrant by providing the 5% plus the percentage gained by advancing to the level. Of note as well is that the less experienced teachers below 14 years, who make up the majority of Stafford teachers, receive approximately just slightly above 5% of a total increase, likely indicating less of a total increase in the teacher salary budget. We ask you to consider this bolder stroke in an effort to keep our quality teachers here in Stafford, and at very least, set about to calculate just what might be the increase to the budget, might this 5% increase be implemented in this way. It might be very worth everyone's while. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
That was the first speaker I could hear. Paul Wodowsky, 8 Picket Lane, the gerrymandered Rock Hill District. You know, I put off today's budget public hearing. I'll tell you, like I tell the Board of Supervisors, there are no issues in this county, they are opportunities. And I didn't really check if this was exactly a clone of FY19, but I suggest everywhere you do a thesaurus check and get rid of issue and bring up opportunities. You know, as the chairman of the 2030 Cicadas, I'm concerned about our 30 schools, but I'm more concerned about how the money is outlaid for our schools. And I would suggest, from a budget standpoint, that you look at FY19, your budget, and look at the actuals, and I'm sure you'll find some line items and you'll say, wow, we didn't use that. Or maybe we hired a consultant that we shouldn't have hired. As you know, I personally believe there should only be five school board members, and from a budget standpoint, that would reduce the annual budget, $24,000 a year, and times four years, that's $96,000. Also, you have at least 30 principals. How many assistant principals do you have? If you're top-heavy in any organization, you're doomed for failure, and you're going to lose the brightest and the best. Though I do believe that service should be rewarded, just because you've been doing something 30 years, as my late dad used to say, doesn't mean you've been doing it right for 30 years. Some of the educational aspects experiences I've gone through in my life, when you don't have an open forum and a good exchange of information, you're lacking education. And I keep on telling, you know, young kids all the time, your first goal is to get their PhD, their public high school diploma, take Latin, and I would strongly suggest that you have a town hall meeting. You don't have to promise anything. You might actually learn something.
My name is Colleen Wieners. I reside at 6 Torrey Court, Stafford, and I live in the Augustine neighborhood. But tonight, I'm here to speak to all of you on behalf of the administrative assistance in the county. They say the third time's the charm, so tonight, as I speak to you for the third time in 18 months, I'm hoping it's true. I would like to urge you to do all you can to have the administrative assistance brought to a fair market pay basis. We've seen our building maintenance and CTE staff, along with paraprofessionals and school bus drivers, be evaluated and placed on a higher pay scale, yet we continue to mind our manners and wait our turn. Well, this is our turn. For too long, we've sat patiently, now we need action to bring us up to market pay. In most cases, we fall at least 20% below market scale. In fact, one of our students at Forge was recently hired for a part-time job that affords him an hourly wage of $15. Isn't it sad when your students are actually earning more an hour than you? Yes, it's true. He earns more than I, and one of our full-time 12-month administrative assistants at our school earns just $12.42 per hour for full-time work. We range from $1,242 to $1,820 per hour. Most of us were not given consideration for the experience that they came with and remain at step zero year after year. Without spousal support, we effectively could not afford to keep these jobs. The one single employee we do have rents a basement apartment from a friend. That's the best she can do and still live near her job. Stafford County Public Schools is getting a very good bang for its buck, and now it's time for the tables to turn. We all need a living wage and one that makes us feel valued here. We've stayed year after year waiting for the promises to come true because we truly love what we do and who we do it for. The Evergreen Study is complete, and we ask that you fully fund their recommendations. Eight years is too long to go without a raise when your salary is already well below market. Please show us in our bank accounts that what we do, what experience we bring, and the work ethic we provide is valued. Thank you, each of you, and thank you, Dr. Kizner, for spending your time with us this afternoon at Forge. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on the public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget? Please come forward, and after you speak, you can sign the sheet on the side. Thank you. If there's anyone else that wants to come, please, please line up, because when we finish this one, we'll go into the public comment, and you all get the chance to talk again.
Good evening, Dr. Kizner, members of the board. Thank you for having me. I'm Michelle Wickman. I'm at 305 Bentley Court in Hampton Oaks, and I teach at North Stafford High School. And I didn't intend to speak tonight, so I kind of typed some stuff up on my phone real quick, and bear with me. I think this is the best budget we've seen in recent years. It has a lot of great things in all the right places. And I'm speaking tonight simply to ask you to amend the request to include 5% for all employees. Educators in this county are discouraged, and they are mistrustful of both representative boards, honestly, I think due in part to the history of finger-pointing and fighting that goes on every year. And we don't need more disparity, as has been seen in recent years, especially with the market scale. We need unity, and we desperately need validation. And a 5% increase for all employees would be a great show of support. Anything else could, I fear, be the single straw that breaks a lot of proverbial camel's backs when the time comes to sign contracts this year. Thank you, guys, for everything you do. Have a good night.
Oh, please sign in. Excuse me, could you please sign in? There's a sign-in sheet, that's just for the record. Anyone else want to address the board on the public budget hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public budget hearing and come to citizen comments. Dr. Chase?
So, the school board, nope, hold on, I got to switch to the next one. There we go. All right. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairwoman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1113, Public Complaints. Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. We have five people who signed up for citizen comments. I'm going to call those names, and then after these people have spoken, anyone else who wishes to address the board can come forward. The first speaker is Matthew Lentz. The second is Rachel Omero-Paddock, and the third is Julie Perham.
Good evening, members of the school board, and thank you for everything that you do. And, Dr. Kizner, my name is Matthew Lentz. I'm German teacher at Colonial Forge High School. I live at 14 Marshall Place in Fredericksburg, which is actually on the Stafford side, 22405. I'm speaking on behalf, as an employee, and on behalf of the SEA tonight, to give an update on the Red for Ed movement. Let me begin by saying how grateful we are that Dr. Kizner has partnered with SEA and Red for Ed on Tuesdays. The increase in participation by Stafford County educators is truly exciting. It's exhilarating for me to see so many people participating there. As I mentioned last board meeting, the Red for Ed movement is nationwide. We, as educators, from bus drivers and administrative assistants to school nurses and paraprofessionals, have awakened and begun to speak out about the drastic decrease in funding to our nation's schools. We are alarmed at the lack of interest in education professions because of the beating education that's taken in the political arena, not at the school board level. Okay, want to make that point there. And our children are the ones who suffer. Red for Ed is for adequate school funding. In Richmond and in Arizona last year, I couldn't help but notice the clever signs that educators carried on the marches, signs that said, "Support our children, fund our future." And one of my personal favorites, 2008 called and it wants its funding back. Having politicians notice that by attacking education professions, they're actually attacking our children. Therefore, I ask that you, as a public school board, support the Red for Ed movement and adopt a resolution showing your support to bring back adequate educational funding from our state. Thank you. Oh, and on behalf of our appreciation from SEA, Dr. Kizner, we made a shirt for you.
Well, the next meeting will be on a Tuesday, Dr. Kizner, so we'll expect to see you wearing your --
And I'm not taking any more calls from Michelle, SEA. I got no shirt.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Kizner. My name is Rachel Omero-Paddock, and I live at 113 Basalt Drive in Fredericksburg. I'm a teacher at Hampton Oaks Elementary School, and I'm also a mother of Stafford County Public Schools children. I have been a teacher for seven years. Four of those years have been spent here in Stafford County. I do have two high school students who attend, so I am also not only talking this evening as a teacher, but also as a mother. When I moved here to Stafford 10 years ago after living in Germany for four, this was the place to be. This was the place to have your kids. This was the place to work, Stafford County. Stafford County was everybody rated about it. It was huge, all over the internet. And I've noticed as the years go on, that is no longer the situation. I, too, am a teacher who does not get paid a livable wage, and am very grateful for my husband and what he provides for our family, because without it, I could not afford to pay rent here in this county. I am an MA degree holder, plus 15 years. So, educationally speaking, I have a great deal of education, but I can't afford to pay my bills without my husband's help. That being said, I am a Red for Ed person because I know that all my children and the children in the public schools matter. I am Red for Ed because I've witnessed a drastic reduction in school funding over the years and how this has impacted our educators' abilities. This year alone, after switching from first grade to third grade, I have already spent almost 3,000 of my own dollars putting into my classroom, whether it be things that I'm helping curriculum-boosting, additional paper, supplies for my students who aren't provided supplies. I have students who showed up, five of them this year, they did not have school supplies, and they never brought them. So, I made sure that they had them. That's my job as a teacher. I am Red for Ed because I love what I do, and I hate seeing our profession being attacked by politicians and members of our community who have no idea what we actually do on a day-to-day basis. I am Red for Ed because I see our educators leaving the county and the profession altogether, and firsthand how it has hurt our children who function best where there is consistency in their lives. I can tell you right now, with the way that I get paid in Stafford County versus Fairfax or Prince William, I could make $10,000 to $20,000 more a year, but I love Stafford County. I want to stay in Stafford County. I do not want to have to leave this county. Lastly, I am Red for Ed because I care. I care not only about where I live and this county, but I care about the children that live here, because my children are those children. I care that this is a nationwide movement advocating for a better education for our children. I care that Los Angeles Public Schools had to take action as well to improve their situations, and I care that West Virginia educators had to vote to take action again. Thank you, Dr. Kizner, for the support of our movement, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
That brings us to Sandy Morrison. Oh, Morrison. I'm glad you see that eye that I don't see here. Sandy Morrison and Paul Wodowsky.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Morrison, and I live at 2157 Acquire Drive. I am here to talk about the building blocks for the elementary school redistricting process. If you look at the pictures, you will see an example of an APU that does not follow the rule of common sense. It stretches from 610 all the way to Wide Water's front yard. A parent took a picture of their house from Wide Water, and you can see their roof. They have to be redistricted because the APU is too big with too many kids for Wide Water. It would be much more plausible to keep them at Wide Water if that APU was split, but the contractor was not given the freedom to consider that. If you look at the red area below, you will see plenty of examples of much smaller APUs. Another example, look at the APU projection page on the next page. It is obvious something is wrong with the data. Acquire Harbor, fully developed, no growth expected. It's an older neighborhood, so that makes sense. Hampton Oaks, fully developed, no projected growth. The HOA was established in 1989. According to the Austin Ridge parents, it's fully developed. Unfortunately, 48% growth was projected by the model. There is no possible land available for development in one of the APUs that has 66% projected growth. That APU happens to border Embry Mill. Their HOA was established in 1993, which is only four years after Hampton Oaks. And finally, Augustine, fully developed and yet has 91% growth expected. These are all just examples. The Embry Mill effect is likely causing the models to inflate the fully-developed neighborhoods off of 630. This is not a negative towards Embry Mill at all, just the projection model. A concrete example of the implications of this inflation is that Austin Ridge neighborhood is likely to be split apart based on the inflated APU-specific projections. I know there is hope that the new plans will make things better, but we can't see how they can be better if they are starting off being built off incorrect data. There are a lot of upset parents and families in this redistricting process. Some are concerned with their personal outcomes, and that's understandable. However, many of the parents I've been talking to are more concerned with the process. It seems the best information is not being used as the building blocks for the redistricting plans. A detailed look at whether APUs make sense is important. A quality control review of the APU projections is fundamental. The contractor is being set up to fail. There needs to be some APU flexibility. There needs to be a thorough look at the APU-specific projections. Without these steps, the redistricting will disrupt the lives of thousands of kids, and some of them unnecessarily. We know a redistricting will need to happen. We are asking that it is done right. There are two schools that can't wait, and we know something needs to be done now. Most of us understand that. We trust you can find solutions for these schools until a county-wide redistricting can be done the right way. Thank you very much for your time.
Paul Wodowsky, I already stated my name and address. Eight Picket Lane, so everyone in the county knows where I'm at. Let me give you something about the color red, so I'll put something in perspective for you. I like to use it on my campaign signs, but also red means danger. It's got stop signs, red lights. But that's not what I came to talk about today. I came to talk about redistricting Plan A and Plan B. And as a retired computer scientist, you know, we had a thing called garbage in, garbage out. You have a perfect static model, since I believe 2005 is when Mountain View was done. So, you have five high schools, eight middle schools, and 17 elementary schools. It's what's called a operations research analyst dream. I wish I was writing a master's thesis on it. I could probably write a dissertation on it. Mathematically, your consultant needs to take an operations research approach. There's all kinds of aspects out there on redistricting today. Venn diagrams are very common mathematically. Even the Justice Department allows a 10% variance, which is going to come into effect in 2021 when we redistrict this gerrymandered county. But I don't know the scope on the statement of work that was given to these consultants, but I watched you on TV, and I've seen you all fumble and say, "I can't see this. I can't visualize it." Well, you need to make them give you a topology of what's going on and make the model move. If we have the Weather Channel can make a model and show us what these name storms are going to do and what the projection is, then we're not going to get bad data, just like the lady before me gave you, about fully-developed subdivisions with HOAs, you know. Acquire is the best one. Houses of Acquire, oh, Houses of Aristocrats. You all know how much I love HOAs. Just email me at whyhavehoas@gmail.com. But to be working with a Plan A and a Plan B, and you're restricting yourself because the real census is coming out in 2020, so you're going to have real numbers, not garbage.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, citizen comments, and come to the board comments. Ms. Hazard, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Dr. Kizner was making sure I had my mic on. See, we're doing a good tag team here. We're getting better. Sure, I will start off. Well, I will start off with what I did this evening. For any of you NASCAR fans, I hope you now know that Stafford now has a NASCAR, Brandon Built NASCAR, is now in Stafford County, and they opened their -- well, they had the ribbon cutting today. I have known somebody on that team for a long time. One of the really exciting things about that was standing down there and seeing, actually, some of our Stafford County Public School students who were there. One of them does get to work on the car and stuff, and I thought, what an amazing opportunity. So, as you all know, I never bypass an opportunity to make a pitch. I did ask Brandon, I said, "You're going to bring the car to some of our elementary schools, aren't you?" And he gladly said that he would. And he said he's run things with, like, moving the motors and doing all kinds of stuff. And I thought, what a perfect STEM and opportunity. So, I just want to say, we have some such great partners who want to partner with us in Stafford County, and I think that's really exciting. So, I was really honored to be there, but also to see that here's a really, really young guy. I felt really old. He just graduated from college. But they are taking the car tomorrow morning to Daytona, so I hope we all will be watching our car and Brandon Built. So, that was my fun public service announcement, but now for my more serious one. As we all know, this is a very busy time of year, but an important time of year. In my opinion, this is the time that we find out what our state legislators value and what our community values. The question is, is education of our children a top priority for our state and for Stafford County? The decisions that are going to be made in the next two to three months will impact our children long beyond next school year. School board members are an important part of this process, but we are by no means the only part of this process. I have received well over 200 emails, probably more, about redistricting, and I'm pleased, of course, that there is a passionate response to this effort. But I hope the budget, the compensation of our staff, meeting the needs of all our students in the best way possible, but not necessarily the cheapest, building appropriate and timely school infrastructure, and creating a safe and world-class education system does not get left in the dust of this redistricting effort. We have great, great schools. We have great, great people. Let's make sure we invest in all of them for the future of our county. It is for that reason that many of us moved here in the first place, and I just pray that that effort, our Red for Ed work, those that it's going on, I hope it just, in the midst of this redistricting, does not get lost. I hope that your passionate voices will speak to the other concerns in our county, which have been laid out very passionately by our educators.
Ms. Hazard, Ms. Decatur.
I second that. I just want to thank the Red for Ed advocates for your unwavering commitment to the children in Stafford County. I know that that's why you're here, that's why you're doing everything that you're doing, and it honestly just brings me a little bit of peace to know that my nine-month-old and my three-and-a-half-year-old will be surrounded by amazing, amazing educators. And I'm just really, really happy to hear the change in the tone. You know, when you come up and speak, there's some excitement, and there's some hope moving forward, and that's something that, you know, I didn't always hear sometimes, you know, sometimes, but I'm really happy to hear that there's an underlying excitement about what the future holds for our educators, and I'm just, I'm happy to be sitting up here, working with you, moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While we're on Red Ed, I plan to put, you know, my mouth where, you know, where I feel that the teachers need to have more than just 5% to me. All my adult life I spend with, working with teachers, and they produced and helped my children to be upstanding citizens in the community and abroad. So, I would even welcome, like I said, more than just 5% for a bracket of individuals, simply because they're not on market, but that's another story. So, I'm with you on that. And for all the staff at this point, so that they could be on market and we could keep our resources. And what did I do this week? I attended CTE yesterday, and the committee discussed visiting Enrico, Advanced Career Education Centers at Hermitage and Highland Spring on Tuesday, March 26, to learn more about the many programs to include precision machining technology, veterinary science, AC refrigeration and plumbing, diesel technology. As a matter of fact, we had a couple of folks going into college for this from North Stafford. Pharmacy tech, and radio broadcasting and journalism. We talked about the scholarship subcommittee individuals wanting to participate in the scoring. If anybody wants to participate in that, they could contact Walter Hamm. He didn't give me his information. There will be five CT-related scholarships to be reviewed and scored, and, yeah, they will be due back in the office on April the 5th. And there is a Perkins Needs Assessment Subcommittee also, and this Subcommittee, each year they grant, this grant has to be resubmitted, so this is a good thing. In addition, I also attended TAC Committee and met the new IT and IS Director. In addition, I also attended TAC Committee and met the new IT and IS Director, Peter Taylor. He presented his new strategy to align with the Stafford School Strategic Plan, where the instruction drives the technology and not the other way around. We had a briefing on Virginia Star Group of Talented Students that interned here and refurbished old computers and laptops for needy families and students here in our schools. They mentor middle school students, and the committee has plans to grow the program to other schools. We discussed that yesterday. I would like them to do a presentation at some point in time to the school board. They did a presentation to schools on cyberbillion and password protection. I'm also encouraged that the telecommunications, the TCC, at the, yeah, the TCC, the Telecommunications Communications Committee, works with the school board to ensure that everybody has broadband. I know some areas in Hartwood, for example, doesn't. So I chaired that committee way back, back in 2013, I believe, and I am happy to know that it's still continuing, but we need to ensure that these kids, these disadvantaged families, and also areas that don't have broadband, will be able to get that. So I'm hoping that we could bridge that gap. I also, I am excited, and I want to work with Dr. Kizner as well as with these businesses. I'm listening to Holly talking about NASCAR that brought a smile to my face, because I want to encourage businesses to work with us, because I think that at some point, we could reduce some of our costs, that we could merge and work with these businesses, because they want to help us. I mean, as I travel and talk to individuals in these companies, they say, "What can I do?" And as I find a company, and I don't want to do one-on-one, but as I find companies, I give the information to Ms. Kale and Dyna, and they go on and they get it, they make it happen. So we're doing great things, and these individuals work hard, and they work long hours. So I commend you for, you know, following up on some of my leads. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Egan?
Thank you. So I'm wearing red. You know where I stand. You know where I stand. And if I could have been in Richmond last month with you, I would have. I started a new job, as I've explained to a few SEA members, so I wasn't able to take off to join you all. But contact me next January, when you do this again, and hopefully I'll have a different answer for you. Thanks to Brookpoint High School, their Navy JRO TC held their area manager's inspection last Thursday. It was well-attended by inspectors from around the region. We had the Marines there, we had Air Force, Coast Guard. They all came in as guest inspectors to help out, Captain O'Keefe and Petty Officer Tucci. The program is growing, and we are at, I think, 192 cadets. So we get any more, we're going to need another instructor. So I'll be coming to the Fab, asking for some more budget money for another instructor. So hopefully, all of our JRO TC programs are growing as well as this one is. My son Shane is a senior this year. He's been in this program for the full four years of high school, so it was a little bit of a tear-jerker for me at the end of it. So, end of an era. Yes. End of an era there. Thank you to all the Acquahia residents that contacted me and the board about the redistricting, and those who showed up at our work session two Saturdays ago now, right? If you were a constituent and you have not heard back from me, please email me again. We've been inundated with emails, and some of them have slipped through the cracks. So if you didn't get an answer from me, send it again. I'll be happy to respond to you. And I think that's it. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
So we had the Excellence Dinner for our support personnel about a week and a half ago, and I attended with several other members of this board, and it was a really wonderful evening. And thanks to Apple Credit Union for their monetary award to a number of those staff members. I also got to attend all district band, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, and our music students are wonderful. And shout out to Mr. Steenstra, who was one of the main organizers of that. And then finally, just thank you to the families of Falmouth Elementary, who invited me to come meet with them, and to Supervisor Bomke, who came and heard her constituents' concerns, both about this redistricting process, but also their concerns about funding for education for the students in the Falmouth District. And if there are other schools in Falmouth, in the Falmouth District that would like me to come by and talk, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Well, since we last met, the Stafford Education Foundation met, and one of the things they talked about was the business partnerships, and they're in the process of recruiting additional members for the foundation. They're looking to gather more support from the community and more resources so that they can help the schools. They annually have a scholarship that they offer for one student in every high school, and it is a very generous scholarship, and it is targeted for students who intend to go into teaching. So, you know, students keep an eye out for that. I think the criteria is, either has been posted or will be posted shortly, and that will be, you know, on each of the schools' websites. And we certainly encourage everyone to apply for that scholarship. I believe, was it $2,000 per student? You know, for each high school. It's a total of $10,000, which is, you know, very substantial and will help a lot, you know, in the cost of the first year, at least, of education. I also wanted to thank the speakers tonight on behalf of the raises for our staff, and especially encouraged by the five percent for all, because this is not administrators versus teachers versus support staff. This is all employees. And I certainly would look forward to a budget coming back, or recommendation, at least one option that would include five percent for all. I'm not going to be able to, you know, attend as a backseater for the Fab meeting next week, but I know you all have a lot to discuss, but I would hope that would be something that the board could, you know, consider. Unfortunately, I mean, we're going to have one more budget work session, which will, you know, ask the Fab to make a presentation and bring us some recommendations before the board meeting on the 26th, and that's the night we are scheduled to make a decision on the budget that we're going to send to the board of supervisors. Also, we had a speaker tonight, Mr. Waldowski, who mentioned issues should be viewed as opportunities, and I'm taking that to heart. So I think we have an opportunity to work on these challenges that are going to come before us in the next few weeks, next few months. There's an unending list, but, you know, we all know that there's some hot topics that we will be working on. So if we look at them as opportunities, perhaps that will be more positive. Thank you. That brings us to the superintendent comments.
Just to stay very briefly on the NASCAR theme. When I was superintendent of Martinsville, and I don't think there's many superintendents could actually say this, in front of eighty, ninety, maybe even 100,000 people, I had the honor of say, "Gentlemen, start your engines and do their dark flag," and that was pretty. And being the way I speak from New York, half the cards didn't even know where they were supposed to go. But it was like, it was really a rush. Continue with the business theme a little bit also. So you know, we have a Business Advisory Council, and we are looking to expand a membership. Cherie and her crew are doing a great job. But we are now going to be visiting the schools. So we talk a lot about the technology and the great programs we have in CTE and so on. So I think it's March, we're going to North Stafford High School, and our objective is to rotate to the five high schools and visit our programs. And I think, again, that's a stakeholder group that we want to continue to have them be excited in our school division. Last week, I had a very good meeting with the president of Mary Washington University, and we began to talk about some partnerships and time, it's cultivating relationships and looking at opportunities. And I believe in the next few months, we'll have greater conversation of some of the things that, and we're going to be encouraging Spotsylvania and Fred's Expert to be part of this discussion. I do want just to touch upon one other thing, that I have some information that I will distribute. So I'm beginning to realize that maybe we need to go back, I know you had a brief presentation, I believe, last year, about the new accreditation accountability system. And I really feel like we need to do a deeper dive and really understand what has taken place effective July 1 of 2018. And again, just because our chair brought it up, issues not opportunities, I just want, again, to share a little background to give context to the conversations we've been having as it pertains to the middle school. Okay? So we have eight middle schools, and with the new accountability system, please, we're not comparing to the state, we're not comparing to other school divisions. That's not how it works. They compare it to us. We have to show growth. Okay? It doesn't matter if you're, you know, the highest performing school system in Virginia or the lowest performing. That school system, there's a whole statistical formula, has to show growth. And when we looked at our results of the middle school, we would be remiss to indicate that it's going to change, and to be specific, seven out of our eight middle schools were identified by the state to have one or more gap areas that need to improve. And you have a cycle, just to give you a little preview, so this is the first year, two additional years, that school would lose its accreditation. And what we're offering for the board, and really for the community, is a recognition that we do want to be the best, and we want to make sure every kid is successful. That is what equity is all about. So even when we celebrate accreditation, Ms. Kale brought this up, or someone did last time, we have to also understand that there are groups of children that are not joining us in that celebration. And I already stated to you, and I stated at the budget meeting just an hour or so, we are not looking to make a schedule change next year, because we're not ready to make a schedule change next year. But we are absolutely committed to taking steps, working with our teachers and other members of our teaching community, so school community, of improving the instructional outcomes and the learning outcomes within every classroom in Stafford, but now specifically the middle school. And along that line, you adopted 2017 a strategic plan, and I applaud you. I think the strategic plan has a lot of value. But as, I think some of the times what we do is we have plans, but now we've got to put them in action. And the five Cs talk about changing the way we educate children. Interact curriculums, have critical thinking, have collaboration, have communication. You know the five Cs. So tonight, a little later tonight, this is just one part of the journey of looking at our course offerings so students see relevance and rigor. And that I have shared already with you, and I, you know, is that reading, writing, spoken language, and truthfully, math, but just sticking with the literacy right now, that has to be across the curriculum. It's just, we cannot look at 90-minute blocks and say that is a time, and I'm not even suggesting that's what we're doing, but sometimes that's what people will think. So I'm going to distribute to you now, two things. One, there's been questions asked when I mentioned at the budget meeting or last meeting, what school systems we looked at and what their schedules are. So I have that information for you. And then I do want to appreciate, thank LOD. They did a pretty comprehensive, in short time, and it's, and I asked Dr. Towery to do it more in depth, but an analysis of our three-year trend for our middle schools. Okay? And I'll just end it at this, and I think we all agree on this. Our children are a lot more than just test scores. Okay? So part of our movement towards excellence for all is giving children more opportunities and access to classes that may not have a test attached to it, and that's really the big picture. So I'm excited that a group of educators, way before I arrived here, they had two options, kind of like ignore it and hope it gets better, or take action and work towards it to get better. And I'm glad they landed on that side of the equation. And it's change, and as you, some of you already alluded to redistricting. Change is difficult for everyone. I mean, it's not just parents for redistricting. It's me, I had to change here, and there's some times I'm learning, wow, I've got to do things differently. I'm not sure I like that, but that's, I can't tell people who've got to change that I'm not willing to change, okay? So I understand that in our positions, we tend to hear from people who have most concerns about the change. That's very normal. That's a role we take. I have said this already, and I'm not suggesting you don't think this way also, but at least I said it once, I'm going to say it again. I just really feel like my constituent group, my, where I wake up in the morning is those 29,000 kids. Okay? And that's where I'm going to land on pushing the agenda to improve learning for all. So I will end there, and before, I don't, I mean, I could, what would you prefer? I'll give it to Ms. Egan, we'll get it to you. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. That brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to improve consent. Second?
Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have three information items tonight. The first is 10.01, approval of the 2019-2020 Middle School Program of Studies/Middle School Course Catalog. Now, this has nothing to do with, nothing directly to do with the scheduling change we talked about before. Dr. Kizner just advised that will not be implemented, you know, for the coming school year. This is about the course catalog that will be made available to the students and their parents. And we have Mr. Pratt as our guest speaker. Always a pleasure to see you, Mr. Pratt.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Dr. Kizner, I couldn't have asked for a better introduction for our information item tonight. And good evening, distinguished members of the board. My name is Mike Pratt, and the majority of my day is a privilege to support K-12 science as a learning and organizational development facilitator. But I, like many of my LOD colleagues, have additional tasks, and like Eric Powell, social studies facilitator earlier this year with the High School Program of Studies, I have the pleasure of bringing you the Middle School Program of Studies for information tonight. And you have uploaded, I believe, in Board Docs, the draft version as well as a summary of the changes. And I would like to kind of not rename, we don't want to rename a program of studies, but at least attach a powerful, maybe nickname to it, the power of the possible. Because we have, within the Program of Studies, we have quite a few exciting interdisciplinary electives. Now, with the caveat that not all of these electives might be offered, but with careful consideration with our building leaders, our talented guidance directors, and also our talented teachers that may be attracted to advocate for some of these electives, to broaden and reinforce English skills, also our mathematics skills within some of the electives that kind of lend to a wonderful blend of extending what goes on in our four core areas. I will not go through every single change in there, but the major one that you have at your disposal are the asterisks. And the asterisks are used with courses that may fall into one of the three categories. It could be a new course, it could be one with mixed levels, and it could be one offered over a semester or over a year. And with that, I would like to offer that as our Program of Studies for information. I look forward to coming back in two weeks and hopefully have any questions that you might have in that interim answered for you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Pratt? Or if you don't have an answer tonight, you can just, you know, share them with the entire board. Ms. Young?
Yeah, I just need to know the 4,800, is that to, what is it for?
I'm so sorry.
Are we on 10-1 or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
4,800 in what?
The amount, I think.
It's for printing it.
Is that printing?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just needed to know that was what it's for. Okay, so... Okay, so are we at least trying to save some trees here? Do we put anything online?
It's very funny that you-
And then just printing for those individuals that need it?
Right. It's very timely, very funny that you ask that because we are going back and we're looking at how many issues were printed last year, and we always want to be very intentional with how many we request from the printer. A little stressful for me because we have a very quick time turnaround for this. It's been a privilege to work with the counselors, and they are very eager come around March 1st to start working with their selection sheets, their elective, potential electives being added to that. And also the educational piece, as in our rising sixth grade families and our existing students that are rising as seventh and eighth, we want to make sure that we're as prepared and also as transparent as possible for what may or may not be offered within a building as per the building lead and counselor discussions.
That's great, because I do recall North Stafford, and that's the only one I'm thinking of right now, that they transitioned. And I just happened to be there that night, and there were some Spanish parents trying to find it. So I did the reverse. I'm like, okay, did you all print any? So they went a little bit too fast. So, you know, we have to just phase it in, just make sure that we have it available for those that-
Yes, ma'am.
-don't have online.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And for those of us who prefer paper. Oh, Ms. Hazard and I.
I just said-
Yes. We like our paper. Thank you, Dr. Chase.
So I just wanted to say, there are some really wonderful new classes in this Program of Studies. I don't think they're going to be perhaps available till the following year, but there's some classes there I would love to be able to take. So I think it looks really exciting.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Hazard?
I just have one, and Mr. Pratt, thank you for all the hard work. And this is just a more thinking question, you don't have to answer this. Whenever I see something, especially the one for foreign language, and it says, you know, "Selection for this course is based on a set of criteria, including SOL scores, reading assessments, and grades, and grade seven English," and I know we have to have some criteria, but I also hope that we're not completely rigid in that. Because for some kids, a foreign language is exciting. Like, that may be their excitement, but that doesn't maybe necessarily mean that their English grade is stellar. And I just, all I would ask is if we could be on the-
Be careful about barriers.
Yeah, if that, does that make sense where I'm going? I don't want to eliminate a student because, as many of us talk about, we're a global society, and if there is a student who wants to, and I had a student that qualified for it, and was like, do I really need this? I'm like, you're going to take that class! But I thought, what if there was a student who may not have been, may have been more, and I don't want to say an average, but somebody who might not stand out and get that? I just want to make sure that we are looking to make sure that those students get that. Does that make any sense?
You saw there was Spanish for fluent speakers?
I did, so I thought that was great. But even for that student that just may not, I hope this is a selection, and it says "based on a set of criteria, including," but I hope we are kind of expansive for making sure we don't miss some.
That example, oops.
Does that make any sense?
It does, it does. Basically, Dr. Chase just gave that example, having individuals that Spanish, they're fluent in Spanish, but they're not fluent in English, so therefore that grade may suffer. So though, they should be allowed. Even if they're German speaking, they may not have that high in English, but it would be great that they will be able to take that. But the other point that you probably, I would make, is that if the parents are the ones that are helping the students decide, they might see that and say, no, you can't take it. So there's something that needs to be said, like perhaps saying, it could vary based on, you know, a one-on-one discussion with the student or something like that.
Okay, I'll have a little suggestion. If you don't want to take it, that's fine, but we, in the law, sometimes say, "including, but not limited to." So that means we can consider whatever we want, you know, we, this is included, but it's not limited to that. So if we truly can expand that, that may be a way, you know, to look at it and is-
That's what I was thinking.
Right.
I came up with it, thank you.
It's my day job. But, that's right, well, you and I can get a fluent Spanish class, right? We'll have fun there. But Ms. Young brings up a good point, and Ms. Hazard, you know, there may be students that may be a little intimidated, and that's my word, by the criteria and say, gee, I probably won't get it, so I won't, I won't try for it. So if we can, you know, maybe make it more attractive to them as potential, you know, students, it would be helpful, particularly in middle school where they can just try these things out. If they don't like it, they can try something else in high school, or at least another language.
We're very excited to move forward against, once approved, to bring the counselors into that education piece as well, to make sure that the appropriate information would be conveyed.
All right, well, this is, any other comments? No? This will be back to the board for action at the next meeting, and that gives you plenty of time to get printed and get this out to the counselors and everything good to go?
Can we help you at some time?
I have an earth science background, so I can't say what the weather may present for us, but we're going to cross our fingers. The counselors have requested that, you know, we offer support as soon as possible. March 1, I believe, is-
So can we expedite this? Can we help you? Can we vote on it today?
Yeah, is there any reason why-
Why we can't vote on it tonight?
Who wouldn't vote on it tonight? I mean, if anyone has any issues or concerns that, you know, need two more weeks to address, we can leave it. But boy, with that earlier school start, it's going to be tight. Ms. Egan?
Do we normally keep this on for two weeks so the public gets a chance to opine on it? Or, I mean, I know we have a shortened schedule and stuff, but I'm just, what would they-
I'm recalling the, the high school one, we used to always have to move up because it didn't come to us till late.
Right.
The middle school comes a little later, but, gosh, it's-
May I ask, remember, Egan, like, what would the, what would the public add value?
Well, the public or any of our teachers, or anybody that might not have had an opportunity to see this yet.
To make a change? You mean, I thought that they, that was already?
Yeah, well, we usually, but this is a practice, what we do, before the board takes up anything, it goes on for information, it stays on for two weeks so that the public has a chance to digest it and see what's in it. And then we vote on it, and we invite people to come up and comment if they want to, a public comment period. So I don't personally have a problem with it, I just want to make sure that everybody's had a chance to review this, that's all.
Yeah, I thought this was better instructions.
Transparency, we keep talking about transparency.
May I ask a question? So in terms of individuals filling out their schedule for next year, I know we have some new classes here, but that they're not going to get rolled out till next year. Is there anything particularly different in here in terms of the way children at these various schools will be signing up?
So there is with, again, I'm speaking towards the Program of Studies and not schedules, but there is a possibility that if the means are present for a teacher to possibly teach one of the electives, and it's discussed and agreed upon within the building, we would want that, of course, with the counselors and on those selection sheets, if you will. The selection sheets are nowhere near as complicated as a rising ninth grader. But again, the consideration of having the counselors' proper time for that to be created, and then that educational piece for the parents, that there might be an additional selection, any additional time would be greatly appreciated.
Ms. Egan?
And that's fine, I'm just one person, so if it's the all the board, then let's go ahead and move it. I just wanted to throw that out there. Maybe we can afford next year's change without, you know, with a normal schedule, maybe we can offer that next year.
And it's one less thing on our plate at the next meeting.
Ms. Healy, would we consider maybe something, maybe as I reread exactly, I posted it, instead of "selection for this course," what if we went with, and you, I hope you all will chuckle?
What page are you on, Ms. Hazard?
I actually copied and pasted-
This is page 14.
Okay, thank you. I copied and pasted into my, what if we put, instead of "selection for this course," what about "opportunity to take this course?" Is based on a set of criteria, "including but not limited to" the rest of that sentence? Would that throw off your entire booklet, Mr. Pratt?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I just think, I'm trying to, instead of "selection," because to me, the word "selection" narrows.
So I may be able to address the wording.
You may have better language, that was just what I could come up with.
The language does, because they are high school credits, the language does mirror what's in our high school Program of Studies. So we just wanted to be consistent, not exclusionary at all.
I mean, I can stick with it, I just-
Well, we don't have to mirror, I mean, the curriculum has to be, you know, meet the criteria to get the schedule, but the course of studies would be what?
You're getting a great opportunity to move it forward, so just-
Will we be able to amend-
As long as you put "including but not limited to."
Will we be able to change?
My ears are open and my pen is ready.
Yeah, will we be able to change that "including" to that, not limited, whatever? Can we, can we do that?
Did you write, somebody wrote that right?
Yeah? Okay, great, awesome. Yeah.
You can call me during the day if you need any.
All right, so-
Or Ms. Hazard.
So can I make a motion that we move, let me see what agenda item this is?
10.01.
10.01 from Information to Action.
A motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the Middle School Program of Studies. Do I call it 10.01 still, Missy?
No.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
With the added, with the added language change.
With the added language change?
With the additional language change.
To indicate that that is not the only criteria that is going to apply for an opportunity to take the class.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I guess we won't see you in two weeks, Mr. Pratt.
Thank you very much.
Unless you want to come back and watch, you're welcome, anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to 10.02, Approval of Proposed New Policy 3613 and Regulation 3613-R, Locally Awarded Verified Credit and Special Permission, LVC. All right, this is, this is one of those that we're matching the law. Is that not state standards?
Yeah.
There's, is there anything new here, Dr. Kizner?
I mean, it's new because it's a new law, but it's something we have to do.
Okay. No options.
The legal term is, but we've got to comply.
Comply. All right, and we wait two weeks on this one.
Yeah.
As long as it makes sense.
And it's not going to take any additional staff, is it? Right? Okay, that's good, we're good. All right, and any other questions? We can send in the Dr. Kizner, and he will share with the board. All right, 10.03, Approval of the Use of the National Cooperative Sourcewell Granger Facilities Maintenance Repair and Operating Supplies Contract for the Procurement of Critical Buildings and Grounds Repair and Maintenance Parts Using Budgeted FY19 Funds.
I have a question on that one.
Okay. Ms. Young?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand how it works. So this contract for $175,000, is it an extension to October 2019, or is this a, and it says it's a budgeted amount? So what does that cover? Like, what happens after 2019? I'm just trying to-
Very good. So, yes, ma'am, in our FY19 budget, we have roughly $175,000 set aside for miscellaneous parts to support work orders throughout the division, from anywhere from buying toilet parts to door parts to locks, those type things, right? So in the past, we've been using cooperative contracts. And so we want to, one, get it approved because of the dollar values we're starting to use against these cooperative contracts. So that's one. You will note in the agenda item, this particular cooperative contract is expiring in not too distant future. So we felt it was of value to get approval, to continue to use this contract to its expiration date, with the idea that we're going to either develop, or there'll be another newer contract developed prior to it expiring. So this is vital. We've been using this contract, as I've identified in the agenda item, but because of the dollar levels that we're meeting, we felt it prudent to bring to the board for approval.
And so what, did you tell me what was in it? Like, I know you, I heard toilet paper and stuff.
Well, not paper, but just parts and pieces. And so it allows us to very easily go to a single source to obtain a variety of parts that just support the operations and maintenance activities across a division. And they will, they go from parts that fix HVAC units to parts that fix toilets and doors and those type things. Yes, ma'am.
And if McCosco was here, he would ask anything going to Ferry Farm. I just want to ask that question for him.
Of course, of course. All three of our schools and four sites are maintained properly.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So $175,000, is that for $175,000 worth of parts, or is it for services?
It's not for services. These are, these are parts and pieces that our building engineers and our maintenance, our skilled maintenance folks will use to fix things. So no installation services is part of this, this is just for parts.
Okay, so if we don't actually buy $175,000 worth of parts, does, is the dollar amount less, or do we, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, it's certainly, it's a, it's a budgeted amount, and so as we buy things, that budget just starts to shrink. It's not, we're not entering a contract with these folks, we're just going to, into agreement to utilize their cooperative contract, and we can just buy off that. So individual purchases will be made, and so there is, there is a probability or a possibility that we may not spend all $175,000.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
But I doubt it.
You can start at Brookpoint, ladies room, left of the gymnasium. They're Thursday, and I pulled the whole toilet paper roll right off the wall.
Well, have gone it, Ms. Egan, why'd you do that?
Can I add, can I add Stafford?
She's so strong!
Wait, 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 can I add, is this Stafford Middle, the, well, I don't know if you could do that, the lockers?
I suggest you all send your memos to Dr. Kizner, and he will get them directly to Mr. Herran.
Absolutely. And I hate to say this, but-
Don't say it, then.
I won't. But if the board is in a, is in a good mood and wishes to consider approving this tonight, I'd certainly be grateful. Thank you.
So what would it do if we did approve this tonight?
It just helps us move forward. I don't want to get into a long diatribe, and that's fine. It's just-
We're going down a slippery slope with this.
That's fine, and we can certainly wait, not a problem.
And I can certainly see why everybody, why you would want to do it if there was a deadline or something that we had to meet, but this, yeah.
Fair enough.
We'll be back here, we'll be back in two weeks for sure. All right, well, that brings us- Sorry, Scott.
Brings us to the announcement of the upcoming meetings. Next week, on February 19th at 6:00, the Fab Committee is going to be meeting here in the Executive Session Room. There is a work session regarding elementary school redistricting, the 23rd at 9:00 a.m., and that is going to be at the County Government Center ABC Conference Room, which is actually a more community-friendly space for those who want to attend than our meeting room. On the 26th, prior to our 7:00 regular school board meeting, we're going to have a work session regarding the FY20 budget. Dr. Chase, we talked about one hour or more, what do you think? Because you'll be making a presentation from the Fab. We'll need a discussion. Do you think one hour will be, or actually, we'll say 50 minutes will be sufficient, or should we allow a little more time?
Maybe we could allow a little more time, and then, and then, if, after the Fab meeting on the 19th? We decide that we think we don't need that much time, we could, we could amend the start time? Is that, is it harder to, is it harder to make the start time early, or harder to make it later?
I'd start at 5:30 and move it to six.
Yeah, if we say 5:30, that'll give us a good full hour plus, and then we can have a little break before our meeting. Ms. Egan, would that be okay with you?
Ms. Egan, are you going to be able to?